Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Supervising Meeting in beautiful King William County. Barbara, can you give your roll, come here?
Mr. Moskowsky?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Garber?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Chairman Hodges?
Here.
All right, if you would, would you please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance to our country?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law of the Constitution stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, have you reviewed the meeting agenda? And are there any changes or?
A motion to approve.
Second.
And Barbara?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Moskowsky?
Hi.
Chairman Hodges?
Hi.
All right, next is our guest presentations, legislative update, Delegate M. Keith Hodges, Virginia House Delegate.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, greatly appreciate y'all having me this evening, and it's always good to be with you. And first, you know, before, before I begin, what I always like to tell all localities and our supervisors and our town councils is thank you. The job that you do, and the way I see it and look at it, your job is much more difficult than mine. This is where the rubber meets the road. And at the local level, it's, it's a daunting task, and I greatly appreciate that, you know, all that you did. First, a little bit of an update, since I was here last, on committee changes for me. I now serve on the Communications Technologies Innovations Committee. Of course, on the Health Committee, which I've been on since, since I've been there, and I will tell you that is a challenge on the Health Committee. And in the General Assembly now, because when I was first elected, I believe we probably had eight providers in the General Assembly, at least in the House. We have three physicians, nurse optometrists, and so forth. Now we have two pharmacists, that's it. So making those decisions is a little bit tougher, and I'll talk a little bit about healthcare in a few minutes. But I also serve on the Appropriations Committee now, the responsible for state budget, which I'll talk about a little bit. And on those subcommittees, I'm on the Health Committee, Transportation and Public Safety, and then Compensation and Retirement Subcommittees. And of course, chairing now the Local Government Committee, County Citizen Towns. And I will tell you, and I think all of you will be pleased, that my number one priority in that committee is to not let any unfunded mandates get through that committee. So that's, that's really my number one priority. So we adjourned on February twenty, twenty-fifth, we dealt with roughly thirty-five hundred bills. And when we adjourned, there was one piece of legislation that we didn't pass, and the most important piece of legislation, and that's the state budget. And of course, all of localities and the schools are calling, talking to me, trying to find out what, when we're going to have a budget. Members, I wish I knew. Of course, you know, there, there are some reasons that the budget didn't get passed, I won't get into the politics of that, but the House and the Senate basically differ on, on the, on how we want to, to handle and deal with roughly three-point-six billion-dollar revenue surplus that we're expecting in Virginia. The House, and we, we stay closer to the governor's budget, and roughly try to give one-point-one billion dollars back to taxpayers. You know, many of us, the way we look at that is, you know, people have, have paid their taxes, and we want to return some of that money. And people today, with the way the economy is and with inflation, to return some of those dollars, the Senate has taken a different stance, and they want to spend more of the money than, than the House wants to. We'll eventually get there, but it's going to take some time, and I won't get into the politics of that too much, but I do believe we'll get there. I remember, I believe it was in two thousand and thirteen or fourteen, number of years ago, it was roughly the middle of June before we got the, the budget passed. The House budget, now I can talk a little bit about the House budget and the way we, we are looking at things. Of course, we like to put things into one-time expenses, and that really avoids any, any, any long-term spending and putting this, this state on the hook for any dollar, so we, we want to pay for it upfront. I will say, with the one-point-one billion that the House is looking at returning to folks, that there are certain parameters that we put in there to protect the Commonwealth before we would, we'd pay any of those back, so any, any metrics would also have to be met. The House and the Senate, I am fairly confident that, you know, we're, I know we're going to still, still give the five percent raise, which we gave in the two years, but also a two percent additional raise to state employees in K-12 to adjust for inflation. And also, K-12, I believe it's either a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars for one-time bonuses for those folks as well. The one thing is, even if we don't pass a budget, because we are on a two-year budget, Virginia government will still function. This is strict, this is only making amendments to the current budget, dealing with that three-point-six billion surplus, and I do believe that we will get there. And I know it's difficult for you to do your job, but at this point, all you can really do is make assumptions and get a best estimate, and then you'll have to come back at a later time to, to deal with that. There was one piece of legislation on the last day before we adjourned, we adopted a skinny budget, is what we call it. It dealt with four things that we felt were very important, that we needed to get through. One was dealing with keeping the localities whole and K-12 whole on the dollars when the grocery tax was eliminated. You probably know the, the Department of Education made an error in that assumption in their calculator tool, and we made, made, made the localities whole, I believe that was a little over two-hundred million dollars. We provided our constitutionally required nine-hundred-and-six million dollars into the Revenue, Revenue Stabilization Fund. We made a two-hundred-and-fifty million dollar deposit into our VRS, and we also provided a hundred million dollars for cost overruns due to inflation on, on capital projects that were, that are ongoing in the state. So, you know, there are some things that I look in, in personally, that, that I'll look at when we look, when I look at the budget, to keep taxes low, to ensure our localities remain whole with no unfunded mandates, to make Virginia more competitive for our families and our businesses, to invest in education and our children, especially with the learning loss, and also to invest in our law enforcement. So, the other thing that we've also done, and the governor, and we'll tweak this quite a bit, but the governor introduced a number of things in the budget to deal with mental health, and there is a landmark, really, legislation, and then the budget dealing with two-hundred-and-thirty million dollars to address our mental health issues here in the Commonwealth. So, you know, that's kind of it on the budget, we really can't get into, to the weeds on it, because there are a number of, of unknown. So until we pass the budget, I wish I had a crystal ball, Mr. Chairman, but unfortunately, I don't. As far as particular legislation, some things that I know you're going to be interested in. Number one, the bounty grants, although there's no legislation, that is working. There has been a push from some folks in some of the urban areas to change that a little bit. Personally, I think we need to maybe change some things on our side to open it up more to our rural areas, but some things I've seen in the past would have possibly hurt our rural areas. Broadband is very important, and though that King William last year, I can't remember the dollar amount that you received, I know you leveraged about eleven point, some million dollars in, in that, I think it was what, five-point-four million? I believe, around five-point-four million, and you were able to leverage over eleven million with that. What's that?
Getting a hitch.
I'm getting, is that, that's about right. So, and that is very important in, in addressing, and I, I know we've been working, and we've been just talking about it for a while. That process is working, and we've made historic investments in, in the budget for, for broadband as well. The I-64, Interstate 64, a very important corridor for the Middle Peninsula. As you know, seventy-five percent of the workforce in the district drives out of the district to work every day. And Interstate 64, there's a bottleneck between Lightfoot and Yount, that twenty-three mile stretch. So, the RFQs went out in March, and I believe construction will begin on that in September. And not only is that really important for us here in the Middle Peninsula, but it's also a very important corridor for our Virginia port as well, and to, 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 to expand our port and to continue the great work that they're doing down there. Healthcare, of course, is, is very important to me, and being only one of the providers, of course, they look at me to deal with healthcare on an ongoing basis. I serve on the Joint Commission for Healthcare, Virginia Healthcare Workforce Development Authority, also deal with the area Health Education AHEC Centers. And right now, we're, we're in a healthcare workforce shortage, and I call it a healthcare workforce crisis. And when you look at the Middle Peninsula and the jobs that we have, and I mentioned that seventy-five percent out commute rate, the folks that stay behind and work here each and every day in the district, we have the lowest wages in the state. Healthcare is our number one private sector employer, government by far is our largest employer, but healthcare is our largest employer. And when you're looking at health systems, for instance, they're being charged up to two-hundred dollars an hour for visiting, by visiting nursing agencies, and the nurses are getting part of that. Plus, we need all of the support staff, we need folks at our CSBs, we need LPNs, we need a number of providers. We're getting older and grayer here in the Middle Peninsula. So how do we solve that, and what do we do? We need to give our kid, children an opportunity to stay here, to live here and work here, and healthcare is an opportunity. So I created a position in the governor's office that works across the state agencies to solve this problem. And when you, when people talk about the agencies and government solving this, they typically think of the Secretary of Health. Secretary of Health is a regulatory agency, it's all over all the boards, the licensing and so forth. There are obstacles and barriers with the licensing, but it's also a labor issue, so it belongs under the Secretary of Labor. It also, we, and I talked about the, the, you know, the visiting nursing agencies, whether the health systems are billed two-hundred dollars an hour, their reimbursements are still here, they can't absorb those costs. So we need to look at our reimbursements, we need Medicaid reform, we need insurance reform, and that belongs under the Secretary of Commerce. But then you need a K-12 pipeline, and then through our community colleges and universities. And what this person does is works across those agencies to look at the obstacles and the challenges and the opportunities and bringing folks together. The governor's budget also, after I created that position, we have a little bit of funding in the budget to continue those efforts. And with the Healthcare Workforce Development Authority that I serve on, we have the most extensive healthcare workforce study that's ongoing now, we finished the first phase, it's in phase two now, and we'll have deliverables with phase three in September, so we can carry on and move forward with our initiatives to help solve this problem. I wish there was a short-term fix, but unfortunately, there isn't. But it, it's important, not only to be able to take care of these folks in, in, in our community, but it's also an opportunity to, to keep our children here and, and to work. Another thing as far as healthcare, and I introduced a, a piece of legislation that passed that actually helps bring healthcare costs down for realtors. And what this does, it allows them to form a large group under the Affordable Care Act. You typically have to receive a federal waiver from the federal government. We bypassed that, and we're moving forward with this now and, and putting it together. But in, in our Attorney General, he said he'll defend us if, if, if they say no. And we have some, actually very good ground to stand on with this, but it's, you got me to start to think about our localities. Where, you know, as a locality, for the schools and your local employees, you are either out there shopping around, going to, you know, whoever you're dealing with to shop around for insurance, or you have local choice. Premiums for both are fairly, fairly high, and I'm actually working on a way to bring our localities together, possibly working with VACO and BML, our schools, possibly even bringing CSBs, and, and doing this, and forming a large group to be able to bring down healthcare costs for our localities, because healthcare is very, very expensive for everyone, and we need to find a way to get those costs down. Of course, mental health, I mentioned, and that's one of our number one challenges, and of course, the sheriff was here as well. We talk about this quite often, dealing with our TDOs and our ECOs. We're moving forward with trying to address some issues that we're having here locally, within our hospitals, our law enforcement, our CSBs, and have meetings scheduled next month, bringing a number of folks together to try to address this. But that's, that's a problem in our schools, in our communities, and one thing, we, we do need more providers, but another thing, that's another conversation, we need to start looking at the cause of this as well. But that's a, but another conversation as well. As far as some of the initiatives that I've been working on, number one, solar. When you look back a few years ago with these solar projects, our localities were getting very little revenue out of these solar projects, very little. And you only had two ways to really, was it buy right and conditional use, I believe, through planting and zoning, and you were getting very, very little out of it. And when I'll start to look at solar projects, and I'm not saying solar is right or wrong, but the electricity that is sold from these solar panels, and the solar companies, it's being bought by companies up in Northern Virginia. Stop and think about that for a minute. These companies in Northern Virginia are creating hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs in each economic wealth. We have agricultural land that's going to be tied up for thirty-five to forty years, and we're getting very little out of that. So the legislation that, that I was able to pass allows a locality to negotiate with these solar companies through a siting agreement, very much like you would do a landfill. And it's basically saying, all right, let's have an open and honest debate on what's good for us, whether it's broadband or for our schools. And since that legislation was passed about a year and a half ago, we've had hundreds of millions of dollars that are going back into our rural localities. I'm not saying solar is right or wrong, but if we're going to live with it and we're going to deal with it, write us a check. And, you know, you, you pay us to do it. So that's, that's been very successful for our localities that, that want to be involved with that. I also have a decommissioning bill, because we, when, the part of the legislation with solar is, what is, what, what's going to happen to this land in thirty-five to forty years? It's supposed to be returned back to its original condition. Well, as you know, with, with farming, the, the topsoil is going to be gone. It's going to take many, many years to be able to return this back to an agricultural use. So I actually have an ongoing study between the SEC and DEQ to look at decommissioning as far as long-term benefits and the economy of, of it, so that's actually moving, moving forward. I'll talk cannabis, I'll talk about it a little bit, because it is very important to our communities. The cannabis, right now, and the legalization of marijuana a couple of years ago, was not propped up correctly. And what you're seeing on the street, and what's purchased on the street, eighty percent of those sales go into the black market, which is propping up organized crime, human trafficking, and everything. We're also seeing it tainted with, with fentanyl, other substances, heroin, and so forth as well. I've never been a proponent for the legalization of marijuana. It's not going away, though. So how do we handle it, how do we deal with it? And I introduced legislation, I got quite a bit, bit of press on this, but we need to make it safe for what's out there. So my legislation would allow it to go through the medical processors, that would, it would be cultivated, go through the medical processors, assay, set up the retail market, and then those dollars come back for law enforcement and to mental health. And then you would have a safe, safe marketplace. Not quite ready for prime time, but we're turning a lot of heads, but we need to do something. We really do need to do something. Of course, even though I'm in healthcare, water has kind of turned into the water guru in the General Assembly. So if it deals with stormwater, groundwater, flooding, resiliency, all of the above, it, it kind of goes through me now. And water is actually our greatest asset, but it's also our greatest liability. We're the number, we are the number one, back up for a second, we are known as the land of failed septic systems on the, on the East Coast, in the Middle Peninsula, and then the Northern Net. And these failed septic systems are very costly to replace with these alternative systems, and you're looking upwards of maybe forty thousand dollars. Currently, we have two systems, I was able to get money into the budget, and we have two systems now that we are looking to design, to design study, maintain, and look at bringing down the overall costs of these, these systems, totally a broke-down system with no nitrogen and phosphorus being discharged. And in doing this, it, it, what it does is, if, if, back up for a second, we can possibly get this down, maybe down to about fifteen thousand dollars or even lower per system. Now think about what that does for your property values, where someone is, number one, it's costly, and then you're dealing with issues, environmental issues, and dealing with the RPA and so forth. You can get a variance, put this on a piece of property, and that helps your property values. And we have thousands of these across the Middle Peninsula. And in doing that, we're also looking at manufacturer, manufacturing them, installing them, you'll need engineers, and creating a, a totally new industry cluster. It's also my goal to create an industry cluster around resiliency and flooding. And I'll start with number one dredging projects in the Commonwealth. So we have all of these creeks and, 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 and across the Chesapeake Bay, where the coast guard, well, the federal government funded dredging for years through earmarks. And when those, when earmark funding went away, these creeks are filling in. Coast Guard's coming in and pulling up their markers, they can't maintain the buoys. And there, of course, goes all of the money for the boating, the fishing, the marinas, and so forth. Received money in the budget for the Middle Peninsula and the Eastern Shore for dredging. And by tweaking a living shoreline bill last year, we can now use that dredge material by turning it basically into an aggregate product or concrete, at about forty percent cost of concrete. And you can use it in construction, and we actually have, because I tweaked that bill last year, we have thirty-eight companies that are ready to come to Virginia and do business. We have eighteen of those that are ready to come in to the Middle Peninsula and do business. And that creates jobs, because when you start to look at our infrastructure and competing to attract businesses here, it's very difficult when localities are competing with the same type of business. It's my goal to create new industry clusters, and one of those is through resiliency. And we're making excellent, excellent progress on this. One thing, and I'll mention, I can keep talking, but one thing I will mention, blue catfish. So any of you that fish, especially up here in the Madapenand, the Pumonkey, know blue catfish very well. So it's DWR, Department of Wildlife Resources, actually put these into our rivers back in the seventies and eighties, when it was then Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. They wanted a large trophy fish for economic development. Well, I believe the state record now is about a hundred and forty pounds. And at that time, they did not realize how saltwater tolerant they would become. And they're, they're moving down into Chesapeake Bay, they're catching them down on the Gloucester, King, Queen Line, and the Oak River off of Vabanna. They're in the bay, and they're on the eastern shore. And when you start to get up farther in the rivers and up in the Pumonkey, in some areas, it's seventy-five percent of the fish biomass. And they eat everything. And when I say everything, I mean everything. We have seen them with ducks, muskrats, they eat clams, they end up men-hating a year to prevent a million tons of adult men-hating from ever reaching adult size. And they chad, they rockfish, they have herring, somebody sent me a picture of one the other day, had twenty-five crabs and some up to five inches long, and this was probably an eleven or twelve-pound fish. The problem is, is that the USDA requires an inspector to be on site for the processing of wild catfish, and that was built into the farm bill. And that was political until they changed that, we're, we're kind of stuck with that. But I was able to get Congressman Whitman's office on the line, also Secretary Lor, who spent some time at USDA, and we worked through some issues with USDA and resolved that. We need processors, and the problem is, is the processing of these, and I'll back up, to have those processors on site, we only have two major processors here in Virginia, and they're major, mainly down in southeastern Virginia. We have another small one up here. And if we can capture ten percent of the blue catfish market in this country, and there are no, no blue catfish fisheries on the East Coast, that's nine-hundred to a thousand jobs. So we're looking at food processing, flash freeze facilities, and then shipping them, of course, all over the place, and also infrastructure dollars for watermen and the equipment they would need. So I introduced the Governor's Catfish Opportunity Fund, had Senator Stewart carry it in the Senate as well, and we were able to get two million dollars into that fund, so it's in both budgets, I'm fairly confident that will move forward. I wanted four million dollars, it's a start. But I want the, we're the epicenter of it, and I'm with those jobs here. So when that, that funding becomes available on July first, I'm working now with BDAX and folks to prop up the rules for the grant opportunities. The grants actually are two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per locality and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand per political subdivision as well. And so I'm going to be, this is an opportunity for our, our localities to work together to really maximize the benefit and create those jobs here in the Middle Peninsula. As far as the, the challenges that we have moving forward in the General Assembly, of course, economic uncertainty with inflation, and then with redistricting, it's, we're probably going to have thirty-five to thirty-seven new House members in the General Assembly next year. So it's, be quite a bit of turnover as well, that's, it's, it's going to be a challenge, but I do believe we'll get through it. But I can continue to talk, I know you have a long agenda, and if you have any questions, my wife and kids tell me I talk too much, but
No, we don't.
It did, but I, I can continue to talk, but, but it's, it's my goal to work, Mr. Chairman, is, is to create opportunities here in the Middle Peninsula, and, and really in a different way, and, and compete to create jobs and opportunities for our kids, take our challenges and turn them into opportunities.
Gentlemen, does anybody have some short questions?
Might be a long answer.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be a short answer, man.
Just one thing I will say, Delegate Hodges is, we really don't have a surplus. We've got bridges, and we've got, we've got roads that need work on, and I heard a man in the meeting that long, and he said, until we don't have debt, we don't have a surplus.
Yeah.
We really don't.
I understand, Chairman.
All right.
Every time I was going to say, Keith, why don't we hit on this, you, you, you hit on it, so, you know, obviously, and I have a good opportunity to work with you, the, the Peninsula District Planning Commission, so, you know, we're familiar with a lot of the good work you're doing. You're doing a lot of good work, there's, you know, there's reason to go on about it, because, you know, the things that, that the work that's being done in the General Assembly because of the, the bills that you're bringing, it's making a big difference in the Middle Peninsula. So, yeah, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you for the rest of the year.
That was always going to say something. It's, it's interesting, the work that the PDC does, since I've been involved in it, and you bring a whole lot to it, between you and Louis Lawrence and that team down there, some really good things happening.
Well, thank you.
I will ask one question.
Yes, sir.
You touched on the ability to negotiate with solar companies directly. I'm sure you know, everybody out here knows, we can't physically ask for proffers, is this, is?
It's not a proffer.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's not a proffer, it's, it's basically sit down and might have to ask your legal team, but I try to stay as far away as possible from attorneys, but it's not a proffer, it's, let's have an open and honest debate on, you know, the needs of our, our community.
Right.
And, and how, and how can you help us?
It's been done, Ray.
It's, it's been, it's, there, there's a lot of precedent out there.
I just thought something would change.
Right, right, what you couldn't do that, so it's basically, let's just, let's talk about it and see what we can come up with.
Okay.
And, you know, it's not, it's not writing a check to put it into your bank, it's, you know, let's, if you want broadband, you want infrastructure for schools or so forth as well, how can you help?
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Wish I could stay, I've got to have a conference call, but thank you very much and for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folks, next, we have King Queen County requesting withdrawal from the Pumonkey Regional Library System. Vivian Saye, County Administrator, and Rusty Bailey, Virginia, Chairman of the Board of Supervising.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, I'm Vivian Saye, the County Administrator and County Attorney over in King and Queen County. Sometimes I say I'm the, I'm Tom now, but I'll never fill those shoes. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to speak to a letter that I wrote dated April sixth, that was following a conversation that I had with the County Administrators of the other three participating localities in the Pumonkey Regional Library System. I'm sure you have a copy of that letter, of course, indicates our request, or sets forth our request to withdraw from the Pumonkey Regional Library System. We can notice our withdrawal, but that would require two years' notice, or we can request, which of course, this is, that's what this is, to, the, the ability to withdraw, and I will share with you And I will share with you, and so I guess that really just begs the question, why? And I sort of set forth in the letter talking about the fiscal considerations and for King and Queen County, that's exactly what it is. It is not, this request does not come, I, I made that request at the instruction of my board. But it is not a dissatisfaction with the library, it is not a dissatisfaction with the other members of the library, the regional library system. This comes up on the heels, I think it might be mine and I apologize. I think it was off, but apparently vibrating, so I apologize. This request and the discussion that led to the request came during the conversations about our budget and the situation that the county finds itself in now. I will share with you without going into the ninety six page detail of our budget that I proposed for the board this year. That the, that we are in the position until tax rates can be raised incrementally over the next few years, that we are dipping into our reserve. That was purposeful, I, I am told, because of course I just came full time in November. That the board set aside some money knowing that they would need to utilize some of that to balance the budget, but that, for a few years. But that is of course never a situation that you want to be in. So I share that only to say that this is the fiscal situation that the county finds itself in now. And so we are looking for ways to take expenditures that we make and stretch them. Here the proverbial stretching your dollars as far as you can make them stretch. And that is not only a fiscally responsible thing to do, but honestly, that's where we find ourselves, we don't have any choice right now. So the, the request and the amount that we're spending for the library system this current year was two hundred and thirteen thousand and change. The request for next year is two hundred and thirty six thousand and change, and I get that that's the lowest amount of the four participating localities, that's the lowest amount. But we are knocking on the door of a quarter of a million dollars. We have a library that's open thirty hours a week. And serves just one portion of the county now, to be fair, our citizens on the lower end of the county do go to the West Point branch, that, that's, that's a given, they do. And that would not be, I looked at the, we, my staff looked at the rules recently, so that would not be a service that would be readily available. There are, the way the rules are written now, it's something about if you live, work or worship, I think in the locality, so there may be a few folks who could still utilize that library, but that's not our goal. And I will tell you also that that two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars, five, two hundred and thirty six thousand five hundred and forty dollars to be exact, that was requested from King and Queen County this year for our portion of the Pumonkey Regional Library System. We also, two things, do not think that that, that entire amount would then be, need to be absorbed by the other localities. Because there's a lot, a big portion of that is attributable to the staffing. So if our, if our branch were closed, presumably that, that expenditure would not need to be made. There's probably some sharing of fixed overhead, I don't know how much of that would would be, would have to be absorbed versus could be eliminated. Those questions, we, you know, we would need to look at if the, if our request were granted. But I suppose the main point, the, the part two of that, I said a couple of things. Is that it is not in any way the intention of King and Queen County that a savings on our part or, or a restructuring on our part cause a problem financially or otherwise for the other localities. So we would look, we would request if, if you would entertain our request and I'm certain, I certainly don't expect any sort of answer tonight, in fact, I would request that you not, you know, that we just continue this conversation because I think there are too many unanswered questions, because again, the, the real the real message is that it is not our goal to cause additional expenditure to our, our other participating localities, just because we find ourselves in the situation that we really do need to not spend this amount of money on this one service for a very small portion of our citizenry is, is the bottom line. We're hoping to, to spread that out and spend a part of that, but provide a lot more services to our citizens, so that's our goal. And that's the reason for the request. Again, if you have any questions at all, I'll answer anything I can, I'll get information for you, bring it back. The main request from, on my part anyway, at this point is to continue the conversation. I did meet with Mr. Shepley, he was kind enough to reach out and came to my office. But we did not get into the weeds on any logistics of how this might look or how it might work. But I suppose that would be the request at the moment would be to continue the conversation and see what that might look like.
Do you have a date in mind?
You know, the, the goal was July first and that's what I put in the letter, but it, it doesn't have to be that because these things do take time and again, it is not the county's goal to do something, you know, with a sense of urgency and therefore cause problems to anyone else, really. That's, so I mean, that's ideal only because that's the fiscal year, right? But it doesn't have to be that.
And the other localities, I think it's the last thing I've got, would probably have to pay unemployment to those employees if you know what I mean.
I, I don't know the answer to that, I mean, that, those types of things depend on, you know, how quickly they're re-employed and I don't know, excuse me, I don't know how many employees there are there. So I, I don't know the answer to that question, that would be, you know, some of the things that we would look at closely. Again, it's not our goal to cause problems or expenses for anyone else. We're, we're just trying to see what we can do to stretch our dollars further and provide more services because we are in a I don't, I don't like presenting a budget that looks like that with pulling money out of, I've never done it before, ever. But it's
Well, we've got three major projects that we're beginning. A school. That's going to be upwards of twenty five or more million dollars. We've got a new firehouse that we're going to be building. And we got what I call, I know they call it something else, I call it internet and commerce summit, that's going to be located right next to our farmer's market, so three major projects that we got going on. And any dollar we can save, we go scoring towards those projects. We want to get specialty school, that's, that's our main goal, that's been my goal since I've been on the board for twelve years and it's only taken twelve years to get there.
And I, I said that was the last one, I have one more. I, I thought I understood that y'all were going to open another lab. I'll have some go.
I, I can speak to that. So the, the goal is to utilize the facility that we have, which is the library and provide library services, but other things as well, we already, already our social services goes to that location. But we are only able to utilize that facility when the libraries open thirty hours a week. So we are hoping to, again, provide some library services in various forms, a lot of our library users are, are there to use the internet. And that those, so we can definitely provide that service. We can definitely provide ebooks. And at the, so that leaves the unanswered question about the physical books, but we have had some conversations about continuing that service on a smaller local level. So that's the goal is to definitely not close our library, but to restructure, if you will, or redesign the look of how we can provide services at that location. And hopefully a lot more hours because the other thing, and it's not unfair, but the other thing that we, the other option is to cut the amount we spend, but that would cut hours, I mean, that's just axiomatic, so that's not, again, not an unfair result. But that would be unfortunate because we have that nice facility. So we're just trying to, to maximize what we can do out of that and yes, to continue some library services in some format. We do not, we do understand that folks who do this at all the time and that's what they do, they do it best, there's no question about it. So I don't know that we would get to that level of service, but probably not. But we hope that we could provide some level of service to our citizens, again, definitely the computer, internet access, public terminals, and we have a, or we will have a facility on the lower end of the county as well, that we could provide that. And then some other services for the citizens and again, hopefully expand those. That's the goal.
But it speaks in about probably sixty percent of the building is library. So we can't use sixty percent of the building. If the library is not open. We do have a ambulance crew there. Twenty four seven. And they're in the far back portion of the library, the sheriff has a satellite office there. And social services works over there quite a bit, but they're all in the back of the building if the library is not open. And it's, well, I can say it's, it's about sixty percent of the buildings is your library.
Mr. Chair, if I may, your plans for the library, it will have a physical cost, whatever, whatever amount, you know, whatever y'all decide to do, you will still have employees there. You will still have internet, that's going to cost. And you did mention that the residents on the West Point end of the county are using the West Point library.
Yes.
What's going to happen with this one is those people will find their way to our library system. It is going to cost, it is a cost to allow y'all to do this. If we ever decided to do anything ourselves, go independent, which may never happen. We would be asking the others to put even more of a bill. Because our, our library cost or what's the figure, close to six hundred thousand?
Your request for this coming year, six oh two, nine oh seven.
That's what I thought, six hundred thousand.
Do you own your building?
Correct, we do, and we currently do provide internet there.
I, I visited over there about a year ago now, nice place. Have you, your citizens' feedback, how has that been so far?
Nominal. I've spoken with a few groups, I've, I've told any group that I can get in front of, for example, the museum folks I spoke with the other day and that's basically, it's not exactly the same group as the historical society, but there's some overlap, so I, I guess I sort of count that conversation to have included them to a degree. Also the women's club, so I have, we have not yet, I haven't anyway had any negative. Because of the goal of providing extended services and different services.
Well, my, my problem with it sits right now is that the cost that has been reported to us from the library is, is not an insignificant increase in the budget that we've already planned for this year. So, you know, for me to get comfortable with the idea of allowing this. You know, what, however you want to treat, you know, a library, whether or not you want to provide a library service or what, that, that's your own local decision, but we are dealing with a regional commitment here as well. So I, I would want to get to where the impact, the fiscal impact to to us is, is less than what's been reported so far as what as to what it would be, because we already, we knew that we had, you know, one increase coming from this year, we planned for it, we budgeted it. This would be obviously unplanned and then unwelcome increased expense to that line item, so yeah, continuing the conversation, I, I would like to see us find that and get to a number that is either, you know, neutral impact or at least one that we can absorb in this fiscal year.
Sure.
Otherwise, I would, I would think maybe we delay this until we can plan for it on our end, a little more in advance.
And to that point, I, I completely understand and I mean, we just have to start somewhere, right? So when I was speaking with the county administrators, the, the suggestion was made, well, send a letter, that's all we can do is just to start the conversation, right? As we will probably at some point in the near future, go ahead and make the notice for the two year. Just because we'll, we'll land somewhere in between there or at the two year mark, either way, because this is sort of a, and I guess this is really for Mr. Levin, but legally. But the request versus the, the notice, so we might send that, so I, I guess I say that to say, please don't be alarmed, that's just sort of the, the logistics of the, the legalities behind this, it's not anything different.
Mr. Chair, if I may, ask one more. Okay, go ahead.
I guess. I guess everybody knows, I'm not for this because we went through this last year. And we were told there wasn't any other option to get out, we had to give two years notice. We weren't told that we could just petition all the other ones and maybe get out of it, but then we were sort of blackmailed. We were going to cut their funding just a little bit and our services were cut fifty percent, so we were, everybody in the community complained that the library was going to be closed, so we folded and paid all the extra money and like you said, now we're paying over six hundred thousand and they're telling us it's going to be way more if y'all drop out. I mean, I'm just not for it, so I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not going to vote for you getting out, it's not, because we wanted to get out. So, sorry. Because we need the money too, we'd rather use it for other stuff too.
We have one in our county, it's clean up the other end of the county. It's thirty miles from my house to that library. You guys got two, you got one in each end of your county, so I'm staying your, your amount of money that you got to stand.
Exactly.
And they're good, good ways apart. But we got one and it services probably twenty five percent of the county, maybe twenty five percent. Because that's, that was my, my whole contention with it.
But we've wanted to get with you all last year and cut, get together with just us two counties and come up with a library, nobody wanted to talk about that either.
You too.
And we don't have anybody down at Mangahack, you're saying our county serviced it, but it's not, it's serviced in the middle and it's serviced at West Point, Mangahack doesn't have anything, so they got to drive twenty miles to here, so.
I'm not even all the way down in county. I'm only two thirds of the way down.
That's rural America.
Yeah, exactly, our county is seventy four miles long and the library is about twenty five miles from there on the end.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could, I've asked this question before and I never really got a definitive answer. Pumonkey Regional Library yearly asks for X number of dollars. You, I think last year y'all did not meet what they were asking for, is that correct? Or did y'all fully fund them?
We gave them the money they were asking for, for the raises, for the employees.
Okay, so, so my question is, this agreement. We know, we all know it takes two years after that letter goes out. So what is the minimum amount of money that you could contribute to that library? Is it, is it any dollar amount, I haven't seen it. So could you say, we're going to contribute ten thousand dollars so you wouldn't have to spend all that money if, if these localities do not vote in favor for you to immediately remove yourself?
Well, I think that's probably part of the ongoing discussion. And, and, and when and if we can reach an agreement that would allow them to exit ahead of the two year timeline, again, for me, that the goal in that negotiation is to make it a fiscally neutral hit to the other member locality. So I think, I think we're on the same page.
Kind of, but I, I still haven't had that question answered. If their ask is, in your case, two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. Are you considered out of this system if you do not fully fund them? No, I don't think so. So what is the minimum amount, somebody answered, that you could contribute and still be a member of Pumonkey Regional Library, I have not seen that in our agreement, I'm thinking y'all probably have the same agreement, maybe somewhat different, so can anyone answer that?
I, I don't personally.
I'm just wondering if that could be an option for y'all, since you want to get.
I, I don't think there is a number because we're, we're in and so yeah, there, there, I don't, I don't think that there legally is a number because as you know, your budget, all of our budgets are subject to approval on an annual basis. So we could put in zero and technically we're still in. And then you could sue us for money, you know, then, then they would, they beg the questions, what's next and that.
So the answer is, you're not committed to any form of funding or, or a very minimal amount of funding.
The, let me, let me answer your question this way, it may help, I don't know. In the budget that I proposed and provided to the board, I put in that budget the same amount as last year, which is two hundred thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy one dollars. That budget has not been approved yet, it, it's up for a vote on May eighth, but that's the amount that's in there, status quo. Again, assuming that that, if that goes through that way, that money would be there. Then I could be instructed to not spend it, you know, any number of things could happen, but that's what's in the budget.
Well, I I still, I still haven't gotten that answer. I guess I'm not asking the question correctly. Are you, under your agreement with Pumonki Regional Library, committed to any amount of compensation to them?
I don't, I'll say two things, and this, these are legal questions, so I'll defer to, Mr. Levin might disagree with me. First of all, the agreement that I have seen is about a page and a half long, and I'm not so sure it's enforceable for many reasons. Secondly, it does not set forth a number. And thirdly, I would go back to all of our budgets or in any obligations, if it's not a contractual obligation, which I don't see, and I don't, I will not profess to you that I have seen every governing document of this agreement, but unless there's a contractual obligation, which I haven't seen, as we all know, our budgets are subject to annual appropriation. So at at this point, I don't see a requirement, but you know, that's not, also, that's not the way I do business either. Now, I don't get a vote, so, but that's not what I would recommend.
I know it was a tough question, but I I appreciate it, and I'm sure we will have more conversations about it.
And for King William residents, the cost in the next two years would be estimated at fifty-four thousand for both years.
I just don't believe that number. I I I will, I would, that's why I would like to continue the conversation because I just don't believe that number, although, you know, well.
Mr. Chair, can I throw something out again or don't we?
No, no, of course, they're asking what twenty-five thousand dollars for the last year. And I know that if we don't give it to them, I know people didn't.
That's what I said, that's what we did, so they didn't meet their budget last year, we didn't meet our budget last year. We gave them everything until they gave us the upgrade, and we didn't give them just that little bit of an upgrade, and we were cut fifty percent. So they didn't give them last year, and they didn't get cut any hours, I don't understand why some of the people in the system are being penalized. Like, so we were cut fifty percent for paying all that money, and we sort of caved in. I mean, I don't understand. What you said, there's no legal agreement, but why did we do it if we didn't have to do it? I mean, why did we get cut fifty percent? There's no legal agreement saying they could do that.
Well, what happened was they cut our hours, you know, simply because of the amount of money.
You're asking about a minimum amount, right, we didn't give them a minimum amount, we gave them everything except.
I was, I was just looking for an option for them, if this board refuses to to let them out, that, to me, that would be a viable option.
But still, after two years, don't all the groups have to vote? It's not just automatically you get out after two years.
No, sir, with two years' notice, we're out.
Oh, you're.
Yes, and that's why we will probably, we'll probably go ahead and send that notice, just because then we're teed up for, if you approve it, fine, we get out before. If not, at the two-year mark, we will, and and for what this is worth, I noted in the request, the budget request for this year that everyone's percentage change was five percent except for ours, ours was eleven percent. I don't know why I wasn't around, I don't know why that, but anyway, the the bump for this year, we we got a beer, a chunk this year. It's not in our current budget, but again, it's it's not our goal to make your, fiscally, anyone's lives more difficult in any way, so.
It's tied all over, so I mean.
Yeah, I'm skeptical about the numbers, though, I will tell you, my undergrad degree was in accounting, so, you know, you can make your numbers look, say whatever you want them to say. So I'm, I'm not saying anybody's disingenuous, not at all, I'm just saying, I I would like to, I would like to look closely at the numbers and that there may be some room for other savings, I don't know, I'm not on the library board either, so, and I don't get any vote. Again, and I'm certainly not, please don't take that as though I'm suggesting anything.
So, so, Canning didn't add up to me either, because like I said, we didn't give them just maybe an extra hundred thousand dollars, we were cut fifty percent, no way, we even said it, that math doesn't add up.
Exactly, so, you know, it, so I would like to look, look close, more closely at those, but you know, it is what it is, and.
We can't remember exactly what their ask was last year, but their ask was considerably a bit more than just what we gave them. What we gave them was for raises for the employees. That's as far as we went, we figured we didn't need to contribute for services that weren't going through, I mean.
We tried, then we even complained about the internet, maybe cutting that, they said, no, if you didn't give us the whole amount, they slashed us fifty percent, so that's what doesn't make any sense.
The internet for.
Yeah.
You know.
Except when you consider, keep talking too, like I said, I know we're gonna pay more because they've already sent us, told us how much it's gonna be.
As you said, it's just the beginning, so, you know, it's, it's.
Mr. Mr. Chair, if I may, just, this is not particularly about the library, but you're, I did see in the country carry, I think it was, your equalized rate, and you you're actually looking at a four cent increase in your real estate rate?
Over the equalization rate, it's five and a half.
Five and a half, I just wanted to throw that out there for everybody that compares us. And and you are also saying that in the future, the financial condition that you're in, y'all will be raising that rate.
Yes, so that five and a half does not balance our budget. We're still short.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And, oh, thank you for coming.
Thank you all very much, I'm sorry, but if you have anything, I'm in constant contact with Mr. Ashcraft, I'm happy to provide, and Mr. Hudgens, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And he passes along everything, so. But I'll make one announcement as they're asking, the citizen comment period is next, there's a sign up, you have it up there now? If anybody would like to sign up right now, this will be the last call, come, come forward. And this speaking opportunity will be a maximum of three minutes per individual on non-public hearing matters. And after y'all are complete, they'll call it probably as the way you signed up. Yes, if you want to go ahead, I'd get to the microphone and read that also.
If the guidelines for citizens' comment period in public hearings, it is the policy of the board that its meetings be conducted with the highest degree of order and decorum. The board's integrity and dignity will be established and maintained at all times during the conduct of public business, and the board will permit no behavior which is not in keeping with this policy. The soliciting of funds for meeting attendees, the use of threatening or profane language, the failure to comply with time limits, violation of board rules, or other forms of disruptive conduct will not be tolerated. The chair will maintain proper order at all times during the meetings of the board and shall affect the removal of any meeting of any person guilty of improper conduct if the offending party fails or refuses to see such conduct. Speakers wishing to address the board shall clearly state their name, all comments are addressed to the chair. Speakers may address only those matters within the scope of the board's authority that are not on the agenda for a public hearing for that meeting. Speakers are allowed one opportunity of three minutes and may not yield any portion of their time to another. Political campaigning, advertising of goods and or services and the like are prohibited. No speaker is to engage in political statements, personal attacks upon members of the board or supervisors, county employees, or officials, or any other person, use abusive language, discuss matters outside of the purview of the board, or publicly discuss matters the board has solely considered in a closed meeting. Clearly state your position, give the facts, and substantiate your position and state the concerns you wish the board of supervisors to consider. If you have a written statement, handouts, or other supporting material, hand it to the clerk, do not hand materials to the individual supervisors. If you have a specific question for the board, please note that they may not be able to provide an answer immediately during a board meeting. You are always welcome to contact your supervisor personally with any questions or concerns.
All right, Barbara, you want to tell off the first name?
Kelly Spot, District Four. Hello, my name is Kelly Spot, and I live in the fourth district. My husband and I have three kids, six years old and younger, and our middle child, Carson, has special needs. He's autistic and at three years old is still nonverbal. We have been experiencing significant struggles getting him the services he's entitled to his individual education plan or his IEP from the public school system. Due to inability to retain a speech therapist at the school, he has missed out on many weekly speech services in the sped pre-K program at Cool Spring Primary. Now, due to the proximity to the close of the school year, he has to go at least two and a half months with the lapse of services that he is entitled to. From my own experiences from working in King William County Public Schools, myself as a school counselor, and now as a parent of children in the school system, many of the hurdles we and many other families are experiencing are directly correlated to the county not giving comparable pay, thus impacting teacher burnout and loss of staff. In the proposed budget for twenty twenty-four fiscal year, King William has thirty-five percent of the county's tax revenue allocated to the public schools, while the majority of the surrounding counties allocate at least forty percent with their budget to the schools. A reallocation of the portions to the budget to the school system would allow the schools to remain competitive with the surrounding counties without increasing taxes on the citizens of this county. This inability to maintain and attract new talent to King William County Public Schools that it puts a significant strain on the existing staff and is trickling down and resulting in substandard student services. If not addressed immediately, these issues will only compound down the road and may result in lawsuits and loss of accreditation. These are the two short patches, passages taken from the email from King William County Public Schools that were sent to the parents. First, the county administrator's proposed budget does not include funds to cover the local share of Governor Youngkin's proposed five percent pay increase for school staff. And second, county administrator's proposed budget would require a significant cut to the educate, other education areas in time of high inflation to fully fund the five percent pay increase that is top priority for recruitment and retention. I can forward this email if you need to read it. In conclusion, young families are struggling to get the services they need for the children, and we need to align our priorities in our future, which are our children, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Angela Seifert. District Two. Hello, my name is Angela Seifert, I'm from District Two. I'm here to support the Pumonki Library. I will also be adding into the recent discussions surrounding a desire for a new label for mature content and juvenile literature. I have been a resident of King William County for eight years, and in that time, I have continually used the Pumonki Library. I have become a part of the group Friends of the Library. I have always been able to find what I was looking for at the library due to its ten-branch partnership. It offers so many services that I feel are needed in our rural area. They include community classes, storytimes, public computers, rebel hotspots, digital library services such as Hoopla, which I use every day, education and research opportunities for everyone, a place for people to gather safely together to read or for a child to play. That is why we fund our library. I would ask that you place its importance at the top of any list for funding required in this county. I would, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the board for the decision to support the library when budgets needed, needs need increased last year. I have listened to fellow community members discussing what they deem as offensive or adult content and juvenile books. While I am sympathetic to their feelings, I urge you not to allow this debate to influence our library's funding. I think you will find many who believe it is the parent's responsibility to believe their children's reading. The content found in the books mentioned is a very real part of our world. If you are concerned about book content, I would direct you to a website called Common Sense Media. It has a one-to-five rating system for language, violence, sex and drugs, alcohol, and positive role models. Help your children develop good habits of researching before they check a book out. If they're too young for internet searching, do it for them. It would be very difficult and possibly wrong to devise a separate labeling system. I would not like a person to feel alienated by a big X on something they wish to check out. What you feel is inappropriate, I may not. How would we come up with something suitable for all? Also, I would point out that if your child is uncomfortable by something they read, it gives you an opening to discuss it with them. Let's teach responsibility to our children who will one day be our future community leaders. Let's continue to grow our library for them, not tear it down. Again, thank you for your pass support for the library at your time tonight, thank you.
Linda Benson.
I have a letter to read from William L. Hodges, Chairman of Board of Supervisors, dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, to Chris Couch and David Robinson. Gentlemen, the King William County Board of Supervisors would like to address and resolve allegations of improprieties in the county's financial practices. The board assures you there are no intentional flaws in the policies and practices staff is expected to follow. However, the board also admits there have been errors made by staff. Whenever an error is made, proper operational training is provided, and when necessary, disciplinary action is taken. We are aware the King William Commonwealth's Attorney Office has reviewed the actions of the county and staff and has determined there have been no criminal violations. Mistakes are an inevitable part of life, and they happen. The board and all county staff are committed to learning from our mistakes and doing all we can to prevent them from happening again. The board and staff invite you both to review the Edmunds' financial software and its contents and abilities. We only ask that you schedule the reviews so that it is not disruptive to staff's daily responsibilities. We encourage you to take advantage of this invitation in an effort to reduce and eliminate any distrust in King William County government. Sincerely, William L. Hodges, Chairman, on behalf of the King William County Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Couch.
Gentlemen, Chris Couch, District Five. Appreciate her reading that letter, but the letter didn't tell me anything I didn't already know. I guess I'll just add this letter to the growing collection of letters, I have three now. One, King William County letterhead, walking back positions made by this county after being presented factual evidence that cannot be disputed. While I do appreciate that you've acknowledged the misstatement of financial reports, I find the tone of the letter and the proposed actions concerning. You can so easily cast aside the error by saying mistakes happen. These mistakes are recurring financial errors that have happened over multiple periods across multiple fiscal years. Can misstatements such as these even be called errors? Were the financial reports presented knowingly out of sync with the system of record? If basic, some total checks are not being performed, what other checks are being missed? Financial misstatements happen when there are no controls, no checks or balances in a recurring administrative process. They happen when there is no accountability and there's no transparency. If we're really running a government like a business, as we say we are, then the proper response would include a management action plan, a document that clearly describes the error, its cause, its. a document that clearly describes the error, its cause, its fix, and the ongoing controls that would both identify and prevent these and other similar errors from occurring in the future. How can shareholders have confidence in management when it's known that basic financial statements are inaccurate? The same is true for the taxpaying citizens and the management of the local government. A proper response would be one that is made publicly, openly, and transparently. I look forward to seeing this administration address these errors properly and present the plan of action to regain the trust from the citizens. For two months, I've been told that Edmunds cannot extract reports to Excel. One staffer even said it didn't matter what the contract says. Earlier this month, however, I was forwarded an email, one where finance asked the question to Edmunds about Excel extracts. Despite numerous communications from King William, the visit just was not possible. Edmunds responds, saying it's as simple as selecting a different format from the very first drop-down box on the reporting criteria selection screen. See, that wasn't that hard, now, was it? How can county staff not already know this? How long have they been users of the system? Who attended the training? Why are we complacent and make complacent in manually re-entering numbers to generate financial reports, not looking for more efficient ways to work? What best practices have even been implemented in the last year under the new administration? Well, I do appreciate your offer to review the Edmunds' financial software. It's not the technology that concerns me. In my former life, I performed numerous assessments of back office functions, and they always focused on three things: people, process, and technology. I'm quite comfortable asking those questions, and I have as much, if not more, focus on the people and process that are managing King William Financials than on the technology that's supporting it. Last month as a chairman, you said something to the effect that those speaking are getting paid to do research. This is one. Well, did I finish one final statement or no? All right. We expect nothing less.
Mike Wade.
Mr. Robinson couldn't be here tonight. That's why Miss Benson read the letter. Mr. Couch had his own response. I know my clock is burning. I don't really have a lot to say. Disappointing to get a letter like that. It's disappointing that some people in business here that got concerned over some issues of the board's actions had to hire me, but I'm the only person that's been hired because I'm good at what I do. We'll do this a lot sometime. And it's really disappointing when I have to send a letter to Mr. Ashcroft about the behavior that was exhibited during the meeting, and I get nothing back. It's disappointing when the people keep getting told that you understand what the problem is, but there aren't any fixes. And I think what's really disappointing to me is it took a group of volunteers, some with quite stellar CRs and resumes, to pick through this and find your problems that you now admitted to in a letter. The gravity of which you don't want to concede in the letter. I call these CYA letters. They're performance letters. They're written to set a tone. They're a weaponized form. It's done all the time. I do it all the time. Doesn't make it right. I just ask you guys to really look into it and really get down with the program that you need to do so that you can represent the people properly and know what your budget is, know where your money is. End all this debate about money and how it's going down. Put it to good use what's been done here. Not saying it's over. I'm just coming here tonight with a little more conciliatory tone to say that there's a certain point you ought to grasp what was presented for you to look deeply into what's going on and change that. Mr. Couch cites consistently about Excel. I'll be wearing everybody's brain out about it. I get it. But you shouldn't have to go, and I've run, you know, look me up. I've run businesses and I'm in this now. But even when I do a tracker spreadsheet, you know, everything's got to match up. But when I have to manual enter all that data, it's a real pain. And that's why Edmunds has a feature that says ping, just like it does ping for a PDF. Y'all need to figure out why that's not being done. Because that's really been a bone of contention, because that's where all the problems have been found. And, you know, Mr. Robinson cares about the county. You guys know who he is. Not all the people. He can be flying around doing anything he wants to do. But he did this because it's his home, and he's concerned about what's going on. And you raised those concerns, and then he hired me, and yet I found more concern.
I'm the story.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you.
Terry Hall.
Say it again.
Terry Hall.
You go with the tax. Yeah, okay. Yeah, we do have three public hearings on here. If you're here for that, they will be later in the meeting.
Sandra Lilly. Bobby Hart.
Good evening. Bob Earhart, Fifth District. I said Travis wore a hat last week. I thought he looked kind of dapper up there, so maybe I'll follow suit. It's unfortunate that King and Queen has to lay down the gauntlet. When I served on the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Hanson and I tried to cut the library budget. We operated a transparent government unlike what is in place now, where you have a group of people trying to CYA. King Queen has challenged King William County, and we need to follow suit. I spoke at the library board over there. Mr. Edwards was very stoic over there. Maybe there's some alliance between him and Mr. Hodges, who he represents. I'm not sure, but I'm sure that's a big push why we're still so functional in the library and the functionality and the benefit or what it provides the West Point. But nonetheless, it's unfortunate that the one person, Mr. Campbell, who spoke out years ago against cutting, you know, one of the library funds cut, is now quiet on the option. If you look back through the board meeting minutes, you'll find that was one thing Campbell spoke on, that we need to cut the library. There's too much money going to the library. We have an opportunity. We've had an opportunity to do that, yet we're still not doing it. Let's cut some library here. Let's follow the lead of King and Queen. Thank you.
Jeanette Wagner.
Hello. I'm Jeanette Wagner from the Fifth District. I want to speak to the issue of, we've come to these meetings month after month, and I sit here and listen to people yammer about this and that and other and the other. But several months ago, the people that stood up to express their comments were not able to do so without a script. It was pathetic watching this charade and thinking, surely, they don't think people will assume they have any sense. I do believe that most of the information that was gleaned from FOIAs that was presented to the county. Of course, these FOIAs were not relevant and caused you and I, money, and the county employees are taken away from their work in order to chase these conspiracy theories conjured up by ignorant people that are extremely ignorant and simultaneously arrogant. They think they're going to uncover dirt when there is really nothing to uncover except smokescreens. They have conjured that. You ask, what is their agenda? Power? Dismantling government? Ego trips? You have dictatorial rich people, a former board supervisor member that never did anything but cut, 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 and complain about increasing taxes, which was not true. And since there is no, was no reassessment for at least seven years, that's just not a true statement. Then you have the salad hawker that thinks he should pay taxes on, he should, doesn't need to pay taxes on his product. That's wrong. But apparently, he has been given a free ride and does not pay it on his wares. You know, he has a kitchen where these products are created and ever have they ever routinely inspected by the health department for food safety. Then have, we have the former treasurer that couldn't think or couldn't finish the job, but she was, she was elected to serve and remain on that position for two years, but that didn't happen, so the county staff had to bail her out. These are people that are trying to create havoc, make people think that they have, there is a problem. These people are trying to disparage members of the county staff, elected officials, certain members of the school board and former school superintendent, and anyone else in this county that works his tail off. Do they do their job better meant they aren't satisfied with that. You, you people that keep inundating staff with the relevant FOIAs, I say, I pay for them, and I say that they are time thieves. And they are stealing away the time from the county taxpayers and the county employees for their gratification. Thank you.
All right, Jeanette Wagner, please don't use some of the words in the future in your speech, like ignorant and stuff like that. I appreciate it.
I said ignorant.
I thought you said ignorant. Okay. See ya.
Well, I did say ignorant.
Yeah, I thought so.
Dorothy Wassenberg. Dorothy.
I'm Dorothy Wassenberg from the Fourth District, and I spoke last month about the libraries, the Pum monkey regional library system. And I read excerpts from a book that I found very offensive. I thought it was inappropriate for second, third, and fourth graders. Fortunately, Mr. Garber had enough common sense to ask questions of Mr. Shipley, who I felt did not give adequate answers to any of the questions that he asked. So I'm looking for a little follow-up here to ask again that we have the explicit books moved to a separate section of the library. I go to the library with my grandchildren. When I'm in the library, I like to be at the computer because I have snail mail at my house. I'm not going to be getting broadband. I'm not in the neighborhood that's going to bring it to there. So that's where I get my computer time done. My grandchildren, I want to know when I take them there that they can go into the library and look at a second, third, or fourth grader, three, four, five, six-year-old book and be able to check it out and have no problem with it without me having to sit there and read the book. That's a funny word. That was what I read from. That is not a funny word. So therefore, I would like to see us and you put, I could put on these library books that are explicit. If someone needs to know what explicit is, I can tell them in no uncertain terms what those words are. I'm not against common language, but I am very definitely against the stuff that I read. And I think that is wrong and appropriate, and our library system does not need our money if Mr. Shipley cannot get his act together and do better than he has done so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last person that's on here.
Forward the consent agenda. Have a motion or?
I'm going to adopt a consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any discussion?
Robert. Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Mr. Skolski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
All right, next, item is number ten, public hearings. You have three minutes per individual on their public hearing topic. And again, please do not use any definitive. Bob, do you have something to say?
The sign-up chief for those more broadband over the public comment period.
I guess we need some.
Yeah, we, I'll make sure anybody that wants to speak. It starts with what you have, and the first one that we have is Resolution twenty-three days thirty, B dot secondary six-year plan, Lee McKnight, Residence Administrator, B dot saluta.
All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Lee McKnight of the Virginia Department of Transportation. The Code of Virginia requires that the county board of supervisors, in conjunction with the Department of Transportation, formulate a six-year secondary improvement plan and a priority list for the secondary improvement budget. Today's public hearing is being conducted for the FY twenty-four through FY twenty-nine plan and the twenty-four fiscal year budget. This year's budget follows the first year of the secondary six-year plan, which is fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The total amount budgeted for the plan is eight hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars over the six years. This total includes telefees in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and five hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars in unpaid road funds. Currently on the plan is Route six thirty-four Kentucky Road. That road is currently under construction. This is, this was the first priority set a few years back for hard surfacing of the roadway. It has an estimate of seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and six dollars, and it will be completed this twenty twenty-three construction year. The second road on the plan is six thirty-three Sandy Point Road. This road is also currently under construction. It was the second priority for the county and will be completed in this twenty twenty-three construction year. Its estimate was seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. The third road is Route six twenty-four Tremor Shop Road. This is set to begin the spring of twenty twenty-four. Its estimate is one hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. Route six seventeen West Spring Forest Road is the fourth priority and is scheduled for hard res, hard surfacing beginning spring of twenty twenty-four as well. The estimate is eighty thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Route six twenty-seven East St. John's Church Road is the fifth priority and is scheduled for hard surfacing beginning in the spring of twenty twenty-five. The estimate for this road was seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Route six twenty-seven West St. John's Church Road. It did meet traffic count requirements of fifty vehicles per day, as discussed, and was accelerated to align with the construction schedule of Route six twenty-seven East St. John's Church Road. That construction will begin in the spring of twenty twenty-five as well, with an estimate of forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The next road on the plan is Route six twenty-one Green Level Road. This is scheduled for hard surfacing beginning in the spring of twenty twenty-five. The estimate for this road is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Route six forty-nine Brandywine Road is a new addition to the plan. It did meet the traffic requirements of fifty vehicles per day and has been prioritized for construction beginning the spring of twenty twenty-six. The estimate for this road is ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. Route six hundred East River Road also met the traffic requirements of fifty vehicles per day and has been prioritized for construction beginning the spring of twenty twenty-seven. And the estimate is one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. As always, any savings we have from previous road construction projects will be, will be used to bring another project to construction sooner, if possible. The total amount in the countywide engineering and survey over the six-year plan, that's FY twenty-four through FY twenty-nine, is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. This, these are, of course, your telefees. Please keep in mind that this plan is only for improvements and new construction. It does not include maintenance work such as patching potholes, pulling ditches, snow removal, et cetera. And at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions or concerns.
How many, do we have any idea of how many unpaved surface roads remain in the county?
Yes, I do. Um, th- there are currently none that meet the fifty vehicles per day. Um, but just doing a really quick search here, you have probably uh about sixteen and a half miles left of unpaved roads.
No real questions for me. We've been refining this list for the entirety of the time that I've been with this board. So like I said, we're, we're starting to really knock some out in rapid succession and we're actually said, we're starting to see the end of the list of qualifying roads. So um, yeah, eager to get these projects queued up and done. I know you are too, because that's less unpaid road maintenance you have to do all winter long. So.
Yes, sir.
Uh, now I've got, I've got nothing to add to that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll open up the public hearing for resolution twenty-three days thirty. Anyone would like to come forward when we're about to list at this point?
No one signed up, Chairman Hodges.
I didn't sound so inevitable. All right, nobody coming forward. I close that public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we have the option of resolution twenty-three.
I will say.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi. Next item up is ordinance zero three dash twenty-three staggered terms for the board of supervisors is Michael C. Have.
Good evening, members of the board. The ordinance presented to you all in your packet is what was previously discussed um and proposed for your discussion this evening. If adopted, it would move the board of supervisors to staggered election terms, meaning three would be up for four-year terms in November, two would be up for uh two-year terms in November. Uh, and they would alternate by annul- by annually after that. It would also direct the electoral board to um choose by lot which districts take two-year terms and which take four.
And we followed with that with the school board. Also, we begin the same way. District one and the at-large were at.
Correct.
Would be i- if we're selected to do stagger two, those both would be staggered two-year terms.
That's correct.
And so, folks, it's a good idea because I have seen boards completely emptied and it's, it's a mess, but you should have some continuity in what you got on the board, but anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I can ask one question to Mr. Valletta before we get started on the public hearing because there's been some public discussion over the weekend that I was made aware of that contended that um, the method by which we were going about uh proposing to change this ordinance was improper. Um, then it was contended that this could only be done by public referendum. Uh, as, as I read the section, I just want you to confirm what I, I think I already know to be true, which is that there is that the public can initiate this process by referendum. However.
Correct.
Board can also initiate this process by ordinance change.
That is correct. There are, there are multiple avenues by which this can occur. One is by ordinance adopted by the board supervisors responsible to the electorate. The other is for the electorate to say this is how we want the board to be elected.
Just so you know, it, if this is passed, uh, it will go to the electoral board, I believe, and make. And then they will make the, the draw and then it'll be announced as what districts it will affect for the two-year term.
Counselor, is that uh drawing a public um event?
Electoral board meetings are open to the public. Um, it would be a normal open meeting.
I'm seeing a head shaking yogs.
And to follow along from Mr. Muskowski's comments, there was also uh alluded that the public had not been made aware of this initiative. I went back in our agenda, at least two meetings this year alone, we've discussed it in open meetings. So somebody wasn't listening or wasn't aware that we've uh been discussing it now for at least two, two meetings.
And Mr. Chair, since I was going to make these statements uh after the public hearing, but I've been chasing this for quite some time. I was a driving force. If somebody wants to blame anybody for it, blame me, not county administration, not the other members of the board. I looked today. I remembered that I had asked for us to have this discussion prior to I asked, and y'all can, y'all can look this up in the minutes. You can find it on tape. November the eighth, twenty twenty-one is when I asked to have this discussion. It's out there. It's not, it's not a conspiracy. And let's just, you know, I'm ready for the public hearing. And whenever we do the vote, it's not just you. It takes a three to two vote minimum. But anyway, I'll open up the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Um, another comment. Um, do we have any positive results from how many counties of the counties actually do this? I think we asked that too, and I never got a specific list.
It is sixty, it's ninety-five counties in the state of Virginia, sixty of them currently do uh stagger terms.
That's been verified.
It's not a novelty. That came from Dean Lynch of Echo. That, that list was sent around. It was sent to all of them.
Okay. I just like that I don't know what to believe anymore and what not to, so.
Right. Let me further. All right, folks, do we have a list on this?
Yes.
Okay. And if you start calling that, you have three minutes on this public hearing alone.
Robert Hughes.
Robert Hughes, second district. I'm opposed to changing the terms for the board supervisors. I fail to see how this is in any way a cost savings opportunity for the county. I would like to think after the uproar you received after trying to eliminate two of our constitutionally elected office offices, you would stay away from meddling in elections. If you truly believe we, the citizens, would support staggering terms, should put it on the ballot as a referendum. Do the jobs you are elected to do, look after our tax dollars properly and with transparency. Don't go trying to fix something that isn't broken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Benson. Linda Benson, second district. What's your hurry? Why the rush to make such a significant change to the terms of the board of supervisors now? This change could make the board less responsive to the voters as it would take six years to remove a rogue board instead of four. In light of your past actions to remove two constitutional officers without voters' knowledge, I would think you would take extra care to make sure you had a mandate from the voters before proceeding with this change. Therefore, I highly recommend you table this ordinance for now. And if the voters desire that they place a referendum on the ballot in November and only then proceed if a majority of the voters approve and you have clear consent, thank you.
Thank you.
Angela's server.
Speak your name.
Angela.
Angela.
I'm sorry, Angela Soffer.
Sheila.
Mary Sue Bancroft.
Evening, gentlemen. All right. It's true that various counties have adopted the biennial county supervisor elections in staggered terms and claims of no additional cost to the taxpayers has been stated. However, there will be a cost associated to the taxpayer or candidates to enact a campaign. Granted, some will reuse their campaign signs, but there are other expenses that will not be avoided every two years for some. All that notwithstanding, when citizens reflect on the actions of the current board members, one can't overlook the timing of the request to amend the current election of board of supervisors process to biennial. Given the public scrutiny of our current board, this request wages some concerns amongst folks in the county. Major changes that affect the voters should be left to the people to decide and should be done so by referendum by the voters. Time and again, the citizens are left in the dark or given minimum input on policies, practices that ultimately affect us, the taxpayer. While I understand board members are also taxpayers, they do not individually represent what the majority of taxpayers want. And often their decisions are made for personal reasons. You each represent over three thousand citizens and do not take time to give those citizens an opportunity to express their grave concerns over your decisions. Three minutes in a public forum is not satisfactory. The ordinance is already drawn up and will likely be passed tonight without consideration of the public at large. The argument for staggered terms is that you shouldn't have to risk a turnover of all the board members at once. There is certainty amongst citizens that this reason is what concerns this board most at this time. There is much speculation that a majority of current board members will not be reelected this November. But keep this in mind, while you enact such a change now for the November twenty twenty-three election, once a new board is in place, they may exercise Virginia Code twenty-four point two dash two two zero, which is the reversion to quadrennial elections, which reads, "The governing body of any county by ordinance may repeal an ordinance previously adopted to provide for the election of the board of supervisors by Emily for staggered four-year terms and provide for the election of the board of supervisors quadrennally for four-year terms." "The qualified voters of the county by petition and referendum in accordance with the requirements and procedure set forth in twenty-two point two dash two one nine may repeal an ordinance of the board or a referendum previously adopted, which authorized the election of the board supervisors by Emily for four terms." "It is highly likely that your decision to approve draft ordinance oh three point two three will be reversed to quadrennial elections with a new board starting January twenty twenty-four." Thank you.
Bobby Hart.
I'm just going to stand here for three minutes because I can't talk that. I mean, honestly, I, I, I came here. I was like, why are we doing this? You know, I, I, I can't think of a cost savings. There's certainly a, a cost incurred by the candidates. And why the rush? I mean, Mr. Garber, I thank you for bringing this forward sometime in the past. You know, I'm, I I've stepped back from some of these things, but I don't understand why the impetus to move it forward now if it's not for personal reasons being put forth by this board. Um, let the citizens decide. This is something, you know, i- i- it makes no sense to push this down the throats of people at this point in time. It, it, it can, if, if Congress had staggered terms, could, would, would it, would it benefit on a congressional level? And what, what's the benefit to citizens of this county? You know, more, you know, training of I, I don't, I don't understand the benefit. You know, I've, I've tried to rack my head. I don't see the benefit to any of the people out here. The only benefit I see are the people up here. Thank you.
That was the last speaker that signed up.
By the board, is there any further comment?
Well. Yeah. So, well, okay. So I'm against this, but let me clear a couple of things up. First of all, this, this does not create a six-year term for anybody. It would create a shortened two-year term for two members, regular four-year term for the rest of the members, and then the members serving two-year terms would have to see reelection again at the end of this two-year term. So no, no six-year term for anybody here. Um, and, and you know, that given that I, I, I don't get the, some of the accusations that were turned just then that, that was uh not understand the situation, I don't think. Now, let me tell you why I'm against it. It's going to be blunt. It might be a bit glib, but chaos should always be an option. You know, there's I, I understand the concern and the reason for wanting to go to this. But I I don't really worry so much about the things I was worried about before, as I've kind of looked at numbers and, and thought about those things. It's about disproportionate voter participation representation. That doesn't appear to really be an issue. For me, this comes down to if the will of the voters is that this government is in disarray, then their will should rule today. So uh, I remain against it.
I'm similar reservations as Mr. Muskowski, like I said, though. I guess he can remember back when he got on the board. It was almost a year where we overthrew the whole board that year because there was so much disarray, but I'm against it also, but for different reasons. I do feel that it's going to be harder for that, those two people to vote at the only two people out of everybody in the county to have to have a special election in two years. And I don't think as many people that showed up for the four-year one is going to be there for that too, but that, like everybody said, we've been assured that that's not the case anymore, but I don't believe it. So then I'm against it too. And like I said, I, what I heard tonight, I think maybe it should be on the ballot for the voters to actually vote, not us. So that's the way I'm going to put it.
There's no special election. These coincide with regular elections.
There's no special election. Yeah, you can say there was a special election.
It did.
Yeah, you did. Well, because it's two years, there's no election for any other office in the county on that two-year period. Every other position in the county is done on the two years before. So those two people will be a separate election just for those before people because it'll be two board members and two school board members. But yeah, it's not a special election, but it's a different time election, which is not consistent with anybody else on the whole county government. So I don't think that's fair, but like I said. Well, yeah, but that doesn't make any difference anyway.
Well, if I can, uh, Mr. Chair, I mean, I stated it before. No one up here should be blamed for this. I was a driving force. You, I encourage everybody that does not believe me to go back to November the eighth, twenty twenty-one. This is when I presented it. It was right after that election and I somehow noticed that the majority of the counties reporting that night were staggered terms. That is the reason. We're not trying to protect anybody up here. You know, the, the people will have their voice in November and the same peo- not the same people, but two, two of those candidates will have to run again. And that will be the only time that one per- that two people will be serving a two-year term. If reelected after two years, the term will be April we had done. I mean, I can't explain it anymore any better than that. But it was, it was an assumption earlier that we just pulled this out of, out of the dark corner three months ago, and that's not true. It is not true. And I am in favor of it. It.
Uh, no, I've stated my point. The uh at a PDC meeting recently, I asked three of the representative counties there if they had staggered. They said, yes. I asked why? Continuity was their answer. Each one of them continuity. Things are complex and chaotic enough what to have two season, potentially two season members. That makes sense. There is no cost savings. There's no extra cost involved, unfortunately.
Anything for us?
I just would like to throw out there as well that if we were going to do this, I think it should be done with half the county employees. I mean, half the county constitutional officers, half of them should go at the two years. I mean, half the county constitutional officers, half of them should go at the two years. All of them should be staggered. We can do that. And we can do this. We can do that, I think. We're the board supervisor. Well, the, um, B, that doesn't make any sense.
I have not researched that request specifically, but the, uh, those elections flow from the constitution down to what the General Assembly has established for those offices.
They have to be all at the same time. It can't be like the treasurer couldn't be the two years, and then two years later the commissioner revenue, because that way all those people leave too. We don't have anybody left in those offices if they both get picked out. At least because they kind of work together, you'd have the treasurer or commissioner revenue that are still in there. But I mean, that stated that the four-year terms or wherever they started, it'd have to be that way forever.
I do not know the answer to that specifically, whether or not there's an avenue via uh, referendum or something else for the term to change, but I, for some reason in my mind, it's coming in as nineteen ninety-one and then four years thereafter, but I don't know. I can't point to that specifically. Yeah.
Okay, that's good. All right, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval, uh. Yes, we did. We did. Uh, ordinance oh-three dash twenty-three.
Mr. Moskowski. Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Garber.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Moore. Chairman Hodges.
Right. Our next item up is ordinance zero-four twenty-three, proposed tax levies for the calendar year twenty twenty-three, which will be voted on and adopted on May the eighth.
Correct.
Will not be tonight. And Percy Ashcraft, uh, I've, I've gotta say to flee it off, I will not vote for this. Uh, I don't think it was it's fair to the town of West Point. If you were gonna do that type of system, it should have been twenty-five cents per county and thirty-point-five for for the school.
Ms. Chairman, thank you for that comment. Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, your third public hearing this evening, excuse me, is an ordinance to impose tax levies upon real estate, mobile homes, tangible personal property, public service corporation property, machinery and tools, and aircraft for the calendar year twenty twenty-three. These rates would essentially fund the budget for FY twenty-four that has already been proposed, and before you, a public hearing has been held on that document. And that will be up for your consideration also at the May eighth meeting. Uh, if I might take liberty, Mr. Chairman, I will read, uh, briefly the, the rates uh, that are being proposed. And let me just say that we're coming off of a reassessment of, of property in which it allowed the Board of Supervisors to consider a much cheaper, uh, combined rate than what we had at eighty-three and a half cents just last year. And the board at that time, when the reassessment process began, they said that they wanted to have the total valuation uh, be, or the, the rate be within one percent of what the total valuation. And that is what is before you tonight, the le- the tax, the combined tax levy. Now, that varies from household to household, and in this case, it does vary from, uh, West Point to the other four districts. But that is the way that the numbers have worked out. And that is the proposal that is before you this evening. So if I may, uh, these tax rates are based on per one hundred dollars of assessed value. And for real estate, the school fund would be twenty-eight cents, and this is for, uh, the King William County School Division. The general fund would be thirty cents, and the combined rate would be fifty-eight cents. For mobile home, it's, it's exactly the same as, uh, as real estate as, uh, is mine and minerals. And public service real estate is also the same. For vehicles, that would be cars, trucks, vans, bikes. Uh, the school fund would be two dollars. The general fund would be a dollar sixty-five for a total levy of three dollars and sixty-five cents. The public service personal property would be the same. And the regular personal property would be the same at three dollars and sixty-five cents. Machinery and tools would be a dollar twenty-five for the school fund, a dollar for the general fund for a total levy of two dollars and twenty-five cents. And the aircraft would be a dollar thirty. The general fund is not applicable for a total levy of one dollar and thirty cents. For the town of West Point, the real estate, as we've said, for the, for the, uh, uh, the general fund is thirty cents, and that's what it would be, uh, for the town of West Point. Mobile home would be thirty, mining minerals would be thirty. Public service real estate would be thirty. Vehicles, uh, for cars, trucks, vans, and bikes, a dollar sixty-five. Personal or public service personal property, a dollar sixty-five. Personal property at a dollar sixty-five, machinery and tools at one dollar. And aircraft, again, is not applicable. Ms. Chairman, this notice was properly advertised, uh, for this evening's public hearing. And I stand ready to, uh, answer any questions that you might have before, uh, you open your hearing.
Just one more statement. That's about a thirteen percent increase for that camera, correct?
I, I believe, I believe the math, that's right. Yeah, I'm just saying that's right.
Anybody got anything before I call? All right, you have a list.
Yes, sir. Don Wagner.
Chairman Hodges, members of the board, Mr. Ashcraft, my name is Don Wagner, and I live in the fifth district. We have attended every regular board meeting as well as the work sessions during the development of this budget. And we strongly support the budget and the proposed tax rates as presented by Mr. Ashcraft and his very capable and committed staff. We have been very disappointed with the opposition to this budget by a group of individuals, some of whom have not previously attended these board meetings, and others who are on the book are seldom seen, but whose intent is nothing more than intact on the board and this administration. However, they all deserve their say, and the board has provided them with that, with that opportunity without interruption. I am, however, most concerned with the attack on this board by the school board, mostly with the comments, school board chairpersons, mostly with the school board chairperson's comments to the Board of Supervisors at the joint meeting in March to ignore the Board of Supervisors' commitment to keep the real estate tax rate within one percent. Had the board capitulated to her request, real estate taxes for all residents of the county would have been increased. And citizens would have placed the blame on the county administrator and the Board of Supervisors. Not getting the Board of Supervisors' support, the chairperson called on the teachers and parents to protest at the budget hearing in April. And instead of, and instead of that Board of Supervisors and county administrator, and instead, and insisted that the Board of Supervisors and county administrator were solely responsible for the large resignation of teachers by not providing funds for a teacher pay increase. All this occurring while the school board, led by their chairperson, is sitting on a reserve fund of three-point-nine million dollars. Mr. Ashcraft, in a public document dated March twentieth prior to the joint meeting with the school board, stated that the school division has been able to accumulate a healthy reserve of three-point-nine million dollars, which can be used for shortfalls or special projects as approved by the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors has since advised that a portion of the reserve fund can be used to provide the teacher salary increases. These funds are administered and controlled by the Board of Supervisors. So they do not have the authority. So, I'm sorry, so they do have the authority to allow a portion of these funds to be used by the school board for salary increases. However, the chairperson continues to insist that those funds cannot be used for salary increases as, in her opinion, such funds can only be used for one-time projects. It is clear that that the failure of the school board to provide funding for salary increases for the teachers is a cause for discontent.
Thank you.
Sandra Willis.
Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I'm Sandra Willis from West Point. I live at thirty-seven sixty Newman Drive. I want to thank you first for allowing me to present my comments. West Point, as you know, has a split levy agreement with the county. We anticipate that the county administers the funding and budget in good faith and honors that split levy agreement. You know, but in that condensed area that we have, we contribute a significant amount of tax to this county. But it appears that West Point residents are not receiving an equitable reduction in their tax assessment. The town residents are only receiving a twenty percent reduction of seven cents in their rate. County citizens receive a thirty percent reduction. West Point residents should not be receiving increases in their taxes while the county residents are receiving reductions. It's not an equitable distribution. My request would be for you to review the split levy agreement in full, reconsider your decision, and rates to make them more equitable. And again, thank you for your time and service to this county. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Doug.
Terry Hall. Good evening. My name is Terry Hall, and I live in District One. My property value increased substantially as a result of King William's recent property reassessments. After conducting some research and speaking with others, I was assured that King William would follow, follow the example of other localities and reduce the property tax rate to account for the unusually high reassessments. And you're proposing to do that if you happen to live in the part of King William that is not West Point with a thirty percent tax reduction. However, if you live in West Point, you are only proposing a twenty percent tax reduction. The proposed tax rate for West Point is unjust and unbalanced compared to the rest of King William. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenton J. Bohannon.
Brenton J. Bohannon, First District, Chairman Hodges, other members of the board. This budget calls for many capital improvements that will allow the county to entice new businesses. Businesses that collect meals tax, pay tools tax, and local sales tax. We've already seen some, such as Wawa, show interest to build within the county. I'm a huge supporter of bringing in tax-paying businesses to cover a majority of the tax burden per county. The budget calls for an increase to the general fund tax rate for districts one through five to pay for these improvements. However, it lowers the school portion from two to five to create level funding. To make up for the loss of revenue, the King William Public Schools, King William Special Tax District will be increased. It's the only logical way it happens. This allows the residents within the county to pay less taxes but receive more money for their school system. While your capital improvement plan sounds like a great deal for all of King William County, it is not. To fully understand the true purpose of this budget, you need to fully understand the split levy legislation. If you look closely, you notice the key provision is that any money from the general fund that is spent for one district must be proportionally given to the other school district. This keeps the school system supported by their respective taxpayers. The problem lies in the types of business the county is targeting with these capital improvements. The businesses will generate revenues that are part of the King William Special Tax District. This means that the West Point, that West Point is funding capital improvements that will only generate revenues for King William schools and not West Point schools. It is well thought out and an interesting way to sidestep the split levy. Use general funds to increase the county's special tax district base, thereby using West Point to pay for King William Public Schools. Looking at this from a legal standpoint, it appears to be lawful when taking a strict interpretation of the split levy legislation. When looking at the spirit of the law, I'm not so convinced. Is well crafted, be complex and difficult to catch. In fact, the posted budget from last year to this year is vastly different in format and style. This adds to the complexity that allows this board to hide the ball and maybe even from itself. Chairman Hodges, I'm unsure if you're gonna vote against this. Until just now, I have yet to hear you speak out against it. Twice I've heard you say that the tax rate is going down, but that doesn't mean your taxes are. Districts two through five are paying what they did last year. We are paying more. Mr. Hurt, Hodges, I urge you to vote against this. Vote against this budget. It lacks good faith dealing and adherence to the split levy intent. It is a smack in the face of the hard-working West Point constituents, and simply put, it lacks the integrity to the split levy. Please do not vote yes and potentially waive any causes of action the town may have as recourse. Mr. Moskowski, I thank you for attempting to do the best at the intent of the split levy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Hart.
Good evening. So, schools are hot button, always have been. And we heard someone earlier say that, you know, we're not enough money going to schools, but i- i- it's not changed. Roughly half of the money goes to school. You know, twelve and a half or whatever out of twenty-five million dollars, roughly half of the money goes to schools. We give the schools four and a half to four-point-seven million more than what is required under standards of quality. This impacts West Point. Land use tax exemption. West Point, to my knowledge, has nobody in land use tax exemption, yet you continue to support it. Meanwhile, you're penalizing your own citizens because they are being penalized by land use tax exemption. The state reduces the amount of money through the Fiscal Composite Stress Index. You know this, Travis. Citizens of this county, point eight-three right now, approximately. I'm looking at Boiling Springs, North Carolina, point two-eight. What do we have? What are we getting for this? We continue to overspend. There, there's no reason this budget rate should be this high. In two thousand nineteen, we saw the signs at the intersection of across, across from Snyder's Garage. Support Moran for lower taxes, and we're still waiting to see that, four years later.
Can I, can I ask real quick, Mr. Long, what's, what's our current composite index? I know it's not point eight-three. Point, point three zero six. I, I knew it was point three something.
Right. No further clues. This public hearing, and this will be actually voted on on May eighth. Our next item up is Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-one, amendment to the fiscal year twenty-three budget for King William County Public Schools, Stacy Long.
Real quick, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mr. Greenwood asks that there be some opportunity for discussion of the ordinance of four twenty-three before we move on.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I was just wondering, what's changed that you didn't like? I understand. I don't like the thing about the taxes that were in the legislation being switched over to parks and rec. That's not part of this. Is, is that, is that what's making the difference? I don't know how it got.
Remember, we've been talking about the split levy.
Right.
And how those revenues that are uh, districts two through five, the special school fund.
districts two through five, the special school fund, revenues that you get, the poll, things that are collected only in the county and not in the town.
Right.
All right, that have been growing, the school fund revenues. The, we can't, in keeping with the intent and the spirit of the split levy, use those funds on the general fund side. Okay, because what that does is it, it means that basically means that West Point's not paying for the poll of the general fund. We're supplementing the general fund, just like we did with PPTRA. There's another example of the fund, okay? So the only way that we can capture growth in those funds that are collected exclusively outside of West Point that are growing the school fund and collect the general fund revenues we need to cover increasing costs on the general fund side is to rebalance the rate.
Right.
So remember, we proposed rebalancing the rate. Now, what that means is that, exactly what they pointed out. The districts two through five, the drop from eighty-three and a half to fifty-eight is about a thirty percent reduction. On the general fund side, the drop from, I think it was thirty-seven to thirty, is only about a twenty percent reduction. That's what it is. Okay, but like we've discussed before, it's the only way under the split levy process that you can capture those revenues.
But I thought what the original budgets had was we were, West Point was having to pay for services that were handled by.
The general fund.
Right.
Right.
But why did we change this? Because we didn't have an increase when we first came out to West Point, and now we do.
No, we always did.
Oh.
Remember that first presentation that they gave us about the proposed rates? They said that.
Okay.
One of the proposals is going to be to rebalance the rate.
Okay.
Right.
And there's no other way. What if we took, instead of moving it to Parks and Rec like he suggested, and put it back to the budget?
That's got nothing to do.
Oh, that wouldn't help.
No, that's got nothing to do with it.
This is the only way?
This is, this is just a discussion of the rate and its effect on how it levies revenue from the town. Okay.
Would it even out later? I mean, would this be a fix in the next budget?
It could be. I mean, you reset the rate every year, so.
But I mean, it's been wrong, like you said, so.
Well, it's not been wrong. It's just that we've seen growth in those funds that are collected, or those revenues that are collected in two through five to the extent.
We didn't estimate it right.
Well, now, when you say we were, there's a whole bunch of different segments playing into this. So yes, we've always been conservative in our revenue projections, all right? And I've suggested that perhaps one way that we solve this problem is to get a little bit more aggressive on the funds. If we're seeing steady growth, then we project more steady growth than we have been doing. And I think they've done that in reviewing this budget and exactly what type of revenues we're looking at. But what that, what that doesn't change is the fact that we're collecting those revenues, and those revenues can only be used to fund school activities. So the only way to grow the general fund, the only way to grow the general fund and comply with the split levy. And we've had this discussion a few times, and I think staff agrees with me at this point that this is a unique limitation that's placed on the general fund by this, by the way this legislation works, but it is a fact, right? There's no way you're at. The only way you can grow the general fund is with the real estate rate.
I was just hoping.
So that's why we propose doing a, doing a rebalance of that.
But this isn't the rebound. This is just a total separate thing.
Oh, this is.
Precisely the issue that West Point's contending is unfair is that we are proposing to rebalance the rate to reflect.
So they have issue with the House bill itself? I think I halfway heard that.
I don't think that's the contention. I think the contention is, is.
Well, when you're talking about those other funds.
Right.
The bill says shall, not may.
No, in fact, it does say may, but.
I mean, may, not shall.
Right.
So.
That's right. We've discussed a few times, though, why the, why, well, it says may because both attorneys wanted there to be, you know, nothing that was, that was so binding. But it was definitely the spirit and the intent that those funds would not be used, because that's how we ended up there in the first place, remember?
But the guidance, the guidance that we have, we're not talking about the spirit of. The guidance that we have is that House bill, period.
Right.
That's where we look for guidance. And what it clearly says.
My, is, is, not to quote Hamilton, but I was in the room where it happened, all right?
That's not a, you know, well, I've heard, I've heard the word, Doc.
I'll finish my point, you can make your, that we've discussed this a whole lot this, this year. And I've given you, and I've given staff, what my interpretation of that statute has always been since it was created. And they agree with me. They honestly really like it, but they agree.
So let me ask you, do y'all agree that, Mr. Ashcraft and Mr. Hudgens, do y'all agree that the House bill, when it says may, not shall, but may, and it specifies certain taxes that they must, do, do they have to go to the special school district? This is, this is a conversation. So they don't.
The legislation doesn't say they have to.
Right, but you're saying, you're saying the spirit of, the doctrine.
Yeah, I'm saying the mechanism.
The House bill is, is the legislature. It is our guidance. It is the statute. Here.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. We can use that revenue however you want, but I'm telling you, you're going to end up with the same problem that you had eleven, twelve years ago.
That's what I wanted to know. If we didn't necessarily put all those funds over to the special, since we may, you still would have a problem.
No, we already do that. We already.
No, no, we don't. No, we don't, because I've asked them. Two funds, Miss Tassaneri took over. She takes two funds, has been taking them out.
Right.
They haven't been coming to us all this time.
But we corrected that in last year's budget when we were looking at how we were spending those revenues, so.
Did we?
There's two, there's two.
You guys can't help but throw me under a bus, everyone.
That's why I asked that.
I mean.
But you know, I'm, I'm going to say something here. I went here when it was put into place. But everybody that was in there that was claiming to be a part of it, now is saying it didn't, that ain't what it meant. Then why didn't you get it saying shall? That's all I'm going to say. If you didn't like the way it was written, you should have got it changed then, because it was a bunch of people in that committee. And I wasn't a part of it. It's either they meant may or.
It's, it, it is our guidance, period. You know, that is the legislature. That is the statute that we go to for guidance. You can talk about doctrine. You can talk about the spirit of. I just, I just don't get it. But that, that's neither here nor there with what we were talking about. You know, the conversation with that came, every year that goes over. And that is part of the problem with the school reserves funds being three point nine million dollars, ever-growing. And we weren't going to take all, the proposal was not to take it all, just whatever the projection was, to use that extra revenue for Parks and Rec.
Right, but even that's a different discussion.
Yeah. We're still on zero four twenty-three.
I was just saying, is there any way we could modify this legally without disrespecting the agreement? Can we, like somebody said, maybe move the amounts around? But that would mess up everything, wouldn't it? I mean, I don't, I don't, okay, so I'm just trying to help West Point, because.
I'm not seeing a nod over there to the left at all. Over here is the left.
Oh.
Sure, I would say you could, but you're going to have to rework just about every item in the budget, right?
No, not rework the budget, just change.
Yeah, we switch. A plus.
You've got a.
Minus on the school rate and county rate, then that is a completely different budget.
Exactly.
Okay, I was just asking.
But we've been forecasting that it was an equal rate all along. And at no time, and I've said it, I don't know how many times, even though apparently people didn't hear me, that it was not equal. I've said that since day one. Anything further? And again, it'll be up, it'll be up for a vote on May eighth, twenty twenty-three. And a work session. All right, are we ready to go on to Resolution Twenty-three Days Thirty-One?
Good evening. The rate is point three zero six three. Mr. Muskowski. All right, on Resolution Twenty-three Thirty-One, this is in reference to two additional funding sources that we've received. So the first funding source is the sixty-five thousand two forty-one, which is the additional interest that we expect to get with our current treasurer renegotiating our rates with Primus Bank. So the increase we would like to see, forty thousand of that go to our fuel expense and twenty thousand of that to go to a driver's ed car. We're currently driving a driver's ed car every day. That is a two thousand six, and we're starting to have multiple mechanical issues with it. Our backup car to that is a two thousand nine, and it has an electrical issue currently and is out of service. The second part of this resolution is for the nutrition fund. These are additional revenues that have come in from the state, the first three. So we received, and these are grants that we apply for constantly to try to get additional revenue in for nutrition. Additional revenue sources from the Third Supply Chain Assistance Fund, a P EBT Administration Fund, and an equipment grant that our director, Sherry Harris, put in a proposal and won for a serving lawn at the high school and a new cooler at a Quentin. And then the last part of that is a request for a hundred and seventy-five thousand from the KW CPS Nutrition Reserves. So each year, nutrition is a separate account that no one, that we can't touch from a school district side, and it has built. And DOE is telling us now that we have an excess over the three-month supply we have to keep, that we need to buy equipment to replace equipment in our kitchens. We have plenty of requests and needs for equipment, but we're, we have been trying to wait to kind of see the, the long value we could get out of the equipment, along with, we were uncertain with people purchasing lunches. I will tell you that we have seen a very large increase in the supplies that we have to buy. So that's an increase of supplies and food, but this is not pulling from the school's reserve. This is just for her to be able to spin down her reserve that's sitting in her fund. What questions do you have for me?
What is your current nutrition balance, reserve balance?
So I believe we're at like three hundred to four hundred thousand in our reserves, and that really was when we were doing additional meals during COVID and things like that. Normally, we are keeping, she has barely been able to hit that three months, which is where DOE wants you to be. So what happens when we pay payroll over twelve months? She has to have enough money in her reserves to pay for the summer months that we've already, the people have already worked the days. We just take their ten-month salary and split it over twelve. So in those off months, we don't have any revenue coming in, so we've got to have that reserve sitting in that bank account.
What's the source of that revenue?
The source comes from anyone that receives free and reduced lunches. That money comes from the federal government and, and then from revenues from students purchasing. And then DOE limits what we can charge for a lunch. So our current rate is two dollars and eighty cent.
So that would lead you to believe that there's no local tax dollars in that reserve, right?
Yes, sir.
I said local, local tax funds.
Yes, it's, it's completely from the amount of people participating. What'd you say?
It came out of my pocket. It's local.
All right. All right, I'll move approval of resolution point three eight.
Second.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Our next item up is Resolution Twenty-three Days Thirty-Two Transfer Station Budget Adjustment. Stephen Hayden.
Good evening, gentlemen, before you tonight, and I apologize, it's just making its way into your packet is the actual resolution request for additional funds to complete the PIPSA transfer station expansion. We're asking for is sixty-three thousand dollars more to come out of proffers and to be added to that capital line. This would pay for a contract for the remediation of unsuitable soils as well as guardrails and engineering that has gone into that.
Are they going to be more, real quick?
I don't believe so. They, they asked today what their schedule is like. They are scheduled to pour the concrete pads for the equipment early next week. Asphalt would be about a week after that, and fencing, which is pretty much besides erosion and sediment control, wrapping up the project the following week, so we're looking at finishing in May.
So, we did have a conversation today. So the, I can't remember the group that was going to go out there, that we physically hired. Are they happy with, with the compaction of that material?
I'm getting sore reports every day, and nothing new has come through.
Even with the rain recently?
Oh, yeah, well, I did, but I mean.
You want Tom to stop? Oh, then forget about it. No, 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 no.
Oh, just stop. Yeah, sure.
I move approval of Resolution Twenty-three Days Thirty.
Second.
No further. Barbara.
Hi.
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 Hi. Thank you.
All right, next thing is Discussion of Well Replacement Administration Complex, Josh Slur.
Good evening, gentlemen.
How are you all?
All right.
All right, so y'all got the memo about the issue with the sand of DSS building. Since I've been here, just a little history, we have had to do some plopping on these lines for one of these buildings every year since I've been here. Dirty water clays. We've always been able to get it cleared up. The status of the DSS building now, everything's clear. Water is clearly potable. No issues there. I've got VDH coming out tomorrow to do an inspection of the site. With the sand being in there, it's something going on with the screen, something down at the bottom of the well. I've talked to two different contractors, two different engineers that have advised not to pull the pump to do a video to look at a repair. Not knowing the status of how that pipe is, I've only spoke to one contractor that recommended it. But he was able to be, if something was to happen when they pulled this pump, that's gone, we have no water to five buildings here. So that's why my recommendation is, instead of trying to put, pull the pump and maybe putting a Band-Aid on it, and maybe only getting four or five more years out of it, still costs it forty to fifty thousand dollars just to do the Band-Aid, and then four or five years to have to dig another well, per VDH anyway. Until they get out tomorrow, I won't know the specifics. But that's where we're at now.
Where did the hundred and fifty thousand estimate come from?
I spoke to a contractor, just to get a ballpark that does it all the time. I did not procure it or anything like that. I just wanted to figure.
This is a standard deep well?
Yes.
No, it's not a standard deep.
It's a, it's a commercial steel pipe well, which has to be required by VDH for public water. You can't use, they're actually, I'm going to find out tomorrow. I'm going to ask him about it, PVC, if they'll allow it. More than likely not, from what I got out of him today. But that will, that will cheapen it up. Right now, we have a six-inch well. There is talk about us being able to use a four-and-a-half-inch well with a better pump, which will decrease some of the pricing, so. There's also, there's a, there's a system that a lot of contractors put on for cleaning out mud in the construction of it. They don't have to do that anymore, but if, I've heard that on this one, if they do require it, it's a ten-thousand-dollar mud cleaning system, but they don't think they're going to require it, so that's going to be a cut in the price as well. But he, he had all that in that, in his price for his estimate. He just do everything at the, everything in there that he thought it would. The only thing he didn't include in this price was the engineering side. VDH does require an engineer drawing for this. I've already contacted Bowman. They're on, scheduled to do that. They are engineers. Um, I've already contacted Bowman. They're on schedule to do that. They are engineers for, for utilities. Um, but I think this is definitely an emergency type deal. Um, you never know when this thing can go. So I don't, if this thing goes, it puts down five public buildings. And then you're gonna have to bring in trucks with water and potable water to be able to keep them in service, and that gets expensive.
First of all, I appreciate you talking to me about it.
Absolutely.
I appreciate the drawing that you sent me. Uh, is, is the site still leaking water from underneath?
We're, we're, we're looking to repair that this week. Um, have, when he comes out, the way where the leak is, it's going through the floor of the building. Um, I want to make sure VDH is approved in the way that I want to repair it. So as soon as he gives me the okay tomorrow, I'm hoping to have that done by Wednesday, Thursday afternoon at the latest.
So, so it, it seems to me that it's actually coming out of the tank where it's plumbed in, because it, unless that pump was running when I was there, I didn't hear it, it was steadily leaking water, so is it coming by force out of the tank?
Yes, well, the tank, the tank gives you your pressure throughout your system. So once your pressure gets to forty, forty percent, the tank will keep going, running back to sixty. So you always have pressure in your tank. That's where your head pressure is to give it throughout the system. So wherever the take, it, with it leaking at the distribution line going out, the pressure drops quicker, your pump's working more.
What's the approximate age of this, this well?
Uh, the drawings that I had, it was constructed in ninety-eight. The asphalt I have was February of ninety-nine, so I'm assuming it was completed in nine, in the ninety, ninety-eight. Which, all in all, no, it's not an old well. But I can tell you with the galvanized piping that they have on the inside, that's not gonna last long either. I mean, it's galvanized. It's, that's what's rotted out going through the floors, the galvanized pipe.
You said you can't use the camera because it, you have to pull the pipe. There's no
That's what they're worried about. If they pull that pump, it's something collapses.
I understand that.
That's it.
There's no way to put a camera beside it. They're all too big.
No, you gotta pull the whole head.
And no way to do a filtering system to filter out
We looked into that, but that's still another Band-Aid.
Oh.
But right now, the sand's clear. What we did was we backed down the pump on how hard it's pumping, so hopefully the suction won't suck the sand up. We're just trying to buy time, that's all.
Is there a warranty on how long they usually last, please?
I would have, I'll have to look more into that when I get into the, the VDH and stuff, more than likely, no. Uh, McCully well, we've had a little bit in five years, and we had to replace the wellhead, I mean, the pump on that two years ago.
Okay.
Where would the fund be coming from?
Keep it updated.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Dave Craft, did you have a report at all?
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, in the lateness of the hour, administrative report is in your packet. It's mix of dates and, and, uh, activities going on, uh, within the county as well as some information from other departments that monthly, uh, report uh, to you. If you have any particular question, I'll be happy to answer it.
With that, anybody have any?
Just one point of clarification, Mr. Chair. The, uh, constitutional officer terms are nineteen ninety-five and every four years thereafter.
Except for the full, same thing we can ask for. All right. And over comments, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, I, I think, is it you and?
I just have one thing. It's just amazing to me that the gentleman who spoke last can't pronounce my name correctly to save his life. That's all I have.
Well, I appreciate everybody coming as usual. I always respect everyone's right to, to come up and express their opinion, and I want to say it one more time. The responsibility for, for that, uh, resolution for stagger turns is solely on me. And I first pursued it November the eighth of twenty twenty-one, and I encourage everybody to confirm that.
Uh, thanks, everybody, for coming out. See you in May.
Yeah, yeah, thanks very much for coming out. I'm kind of disappointed the way some things went, but as you said, it's, uh, that's the way the board decided, and as somebody in the audience said, if people don't like it, and they get a new board, that can be changed January first, too, so. Thanks.
That is. All right, it, it, it was several things. I mean, uh, one prior board member here is, I remember when he wanted to cut the school five hundred thousand, you know? Talking about getting rid of land use. I think the farms are a big valued asset in this county. Now, we don't have a whole lot. We do have some farming land in the town there. We have two that are land use. I figured it might be Mr. Motor, but, uh, I didn't know for sure. Uh, I don't know. The letter that we sent out was for transparency and documentation that we offered to let them come in and review anything that they wanted to look at, but obviously, they don't want to do that.
It's been twisted.
Yeah.
It's been twisted.
I know, I know, and that's what I expected, instead of using it for what it really was about, but anyway, we appreciate you being here. Uh, and, uh, next meeting is May the eighth. And do I have a motion? Uh, most of y'all want to do it.
Mr. Chair, I move to convene enclosed meeting in accordance with Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A eight of the Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel on a specific legal matter, that being the Virginia Supreme Court decision on virtual decisions made during the pandemic, requiring the provision of, provision of legal advice by counsel.
Second. Any discussion? Barbara.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi. Back in a moment, hopefully.
Call the meeting back to order?
Um, Mr. Chair, I move we reconvene in open session. Second.
Barbara.
Ms. Muskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Chair, move SR one.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Chair, move adjournment.
Second.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Ms. Muskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi. Till May eighth.